All right. Welcome to Tuesday, January 25th, regular Board meeting of the Ross Valley School District trustees. It is 6:16 and I will call the meeting to order. All trustees are present. And our first order of business this evening is a closed session. We have one item in closed session, which is conference with labor negotiators pursuant to government code section 54957.6 for all bargaining groups. So we will, there's nobody for the listening audience. We do not have an in-person audience. So we do not have any public comments on this item since there's nobody here. And we will recess into closed session and be back in open session afterwards. Okay. It is 7:06 and we are reconvening into open session at 7:06 on January 25th for Ross Valley School District Board of Trustees regular meeting. Before we move into our pledge of allegiance, I just wanted to have us take a moment to round our souls and thinking about this evening and what we have on our agenda. One of the thoughts that came to my mind about our pledge of allegiance and about our civic engagement is that most of the time when we come together, we are very much focused on the here and the now, on what's immediately before us, who's immediately around us, our current experience of our place that we are in and the moment that we're in. But in the roles that we sit in up here, we are both standing on the shoulders of those who came before us in terms of the policies that we are entrusted to, the facilities and schools that we are stewards of and the land that they're on. And that we're also stewards, not just for the now, but also for the generations to come and the grandchildren's grandchildren's generations to come. And that our role here is both to deal with here in the now, but to think of the past and to think forward into the future for many generations to come and make decisions with all of that in mind, which is one of the reasons why I think a land acknowledgement often makes sense because it's acknowledging that we are located on unceded ancestral lands of the coastal Ni'auq people, of present day Marin and southern Sonoma counties. And that we do so with gratitude to not only the land itself and all of its ancestors in the past and the present, and then looking into the future and the emerging of those who will become ancestors. So for me, that's why doing a land acknowledgement is a moment to ground us in that full scope of our civic engagement as we sit on this dais. And with that, let us move into our pledge of allegiance. Ready? Stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Let's move into the adoption of the agenda and the time allocations. Is there anyone who has any questions or amendments to our agenda? It's fairly straightforward tonight. And if not, we can entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. With the adoption of the agenda, we can go into communications. There is nothing to report out from the closed session. And we are here tonight with only one person in the audience, so I'm not going to stop after each agenda item and do the spiel about come up to the podium in the three minutes and I'll look out into the audience to see if we need to stop for that. So there are not any public comments regarding items not on the agenda. And we move into board announcements.
No announcements.
Are there any announcements looking across the dais or the board?
Nope.
Nice to have you back, Rachel.
Thank you.
Glad that you can be feeling well and back with us. Correspondence and communications to the board?
We do not have any.
We don't have any this evening to acknowledge. So we can move back into presentation and acting. First up.
All right. So the governor's budget. Governor's budget has come out or is initial proposal for the 2223 school year. And Chris Carson will do the honor of providing an overview of what he's proposing.
And I looked at the wrong page.
Oh, you did?
I had the first presentation. So thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening regarding the governor's budget proposal for 2223. And, oh, I'd be too far. The turn on the left side of the screen. Sorry. There we go. Okay. So first, part of the governor's budget proposal is a 5.33% statutory COLA. And that's important because that is the single largest source of revenue for districts as you look at your average daily attendance. It does, it does alter ours a little as we look at our figures since we're going into state aid, I'm sorry, basic aid instead of state aid, and we'll be funded based upon our property taxes, but it does impact those calculations and as we move forward. The other thing that is important to note is based upon the amount of money that the governor has provided, the reserve cap is something that will be triggered. Now, that, that doesn't have any impact upon the Ross Valley School District, but you will hear that in the community potentially. And the reason it does not impact us at all is because one of the exclusions is a district that is under 2,580, which we are. And then the other part of that is it doesn't, it apply to basic aid districts, which we should be next year as well. When looking at the financial projection dartboard, this particular slide looks at what our cost of living adjustments are, our COLAs moving forward on the LCFF revenues, local control funding formula revenues. It also looks at some of our major cost drivers, which are our Calsters and Calpers, which are our two pension systems, Calsters being for teachers, Calpers for all classified staff, and then also our unemployment insurance, SUI. And you, with the single largest source of expenses being in salaries and benefits, these statutory benefit drivers have large impacts upon the district's budget. So this just gives you kind of a cost breakdown, a percentage breakdown as you look across the fiscal years. What I wanted to show, all of these slides come from School Services of California, and they were part of the governor's budget workshop that they put together. And one of the, one of the things that's important to know is that we also put together our multi-year projections, and that is the current year plus two additional years. And so when we look back at historical data, which is the 2021 governor's budget proposal, and then the 2122 governor's budget proposal, and then the current 2223 budget proposal, the only thing that is certain is that those cost of living adjustments are going to change. It's the best data that they have at that moment, but this kind of breaks it down for you that those numbers can change and they probably will. And it's just something to remember. This particular slide talks about the average daily attendance funding cliff. As you'll recall, with LCFF revenues being funded based upon our average daily attendance, if you're in a declining enrollment district, you're funded at either the current year attendance or the prior year. Well, our prior year attendance is going to be our 2122 year. And so what you will see is a cliff because looking at our 2122 revenues, we're actually not funded based upon 2021, we're funded based upon 1920. And it's not just the Ross Valley School District. It's pretty much every district in the state saw a large decline in their average daily attendance as a result of the pandemic. There was approximately a 1% decline in attendance around the state as a, as a whole. And so everybody's feeling that, and so there is a cliff. But that is the way we're funded currently when looking at our LCFF revenues. But one of the things that the governor did is he listened to the cry from the districts saying that, you know, that cliff is too steep. Is there something else that can be done? Can we look at a three-year average? And so he actually put together his proposal with using a three-year average of our average daily attendance. So that's part of, it's our, there's now three different things to look at. It's the higher of our current year, our prior year, or a prior three-year average. And this kind of gives you a rundown of what that might look like. So if in 1920, we were at 10,000, this is, it doesn't have any relation to the Ross Valley School District. Please understand this again is the School Services. And so they're using numbers that are easy to comprehend and see. So if you have a district at 10,000 ADA in 1920, 2021 is going to show 10,000 as well. But if we're at 9,500 in the current year and next year we're down to 9,250, the way we would be funded in 2223 normally would be based upon that 9,500 average daily attendance. And under the governor's budget proposal, it would be the average of 1920 through 2122, so 10,000 plus 10,000 plus 9,500 divided by three, it's the 9833. And so his actual change that he's proposing would give you an increase in your average daily attendance of 333 above what you would normally see. So it does soften that cliff, so to speak, for districts. And this just kind of pencils out. I thought it was important to show what, what happens. I've done a lot talking about what our cost of living adjustments are, also what our average daily attendance drop looks like. This particular slide does a good job showing what the impacts are of that declining enrollment. So that first column would be what it would look like if we had a 5% cost of living increase, COLA. And with that, on $100 million in revenues, you would have $105 million the next year. But if you had a 2.5% decline on that same 5% COLA, you would actually see a drop down instead of $105 million in your second year, you'd see $102.3 million. And so it does have a large impact upon your total revenues when you are declining in enrollment and your attendance. So that's why we always talk about it in that respect. And this is one of those things, I'm sorry, this is one of the School Services slides, but I couldn't resist putting this in. I wouldn't normally do it, but, you know, with the inflation that's there, you know, accountants, we have our weird sense of humor, so let's just start my three cents.
Thank you, Tom.
When looking at the programs within the governor's budget, one of the single largest sources of money that he's, that Governor Newsom is putting out there for education is the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program, affectionately called the ELOP or E-L-O-P. And he's applying a lot of dollars towards it, but a lot of those dollars are for your unduplicated pupils. And when you're in a district such as the Ross Valley School District with a really low unduplicated pupil count, ours is roughly 12%, those dollars are greatly reduced. And so we've been attending meetings with CDE and we're been talking at the county office of education level among all the districts. And the, the common theme that we're hearing is, well, you need to weave together all of your other pots of money, such as your after-school educational system, your ACIS program, your 21st Century Learning, those are your before and after-school dollars from the federal and the state government and other funding sources to help extend those dollars. But we don't have those other programs because our funding level, our unduplicated pupil counts are so low that we're not able to fund those. So we are having, having to look at those dollars to see if it's something that we can even offer despite getting additional revenues. It may not be self-sufficient because the underlying tenet of this program is to run a nine-hour day program to extend the day to nine hours, but then in addition to have 30 days worth of extended summer program as well, which would also be a nine-hour day. And so with the, the little bit of dollars that we're projecting to get to Ross Valley School District, it may not be something that's feasible. Another funding source that the governor has been putting out there is early literacy. And this is one of those programs that's near and dear to him as he's, he had himself a learning disability as a, as a child. And so this is something that he's been really pushing forward and is really looking forward to. He's putting dollars towards educator workforce investments, things such as helping with teacher credentialing fees, with the ability to put dollars towards recruiting teachers. It's, we talked about the difficulty in finding certain types of credentialed staff within the Marin area, but it's also up and down the state. And so many districts have seen, there are many areas of the state have seen teachers leave the profession, and it's been difficult to get new students to come in, new employees to come in. And so this is one of the governor's ways to be able to do that, to get more staff. He's also provided some additional substitute flexibility. For substitute teachers, you have a 30-day emergency permit within one class. They've extended that out to 60 days, so that, that's part of his budget proposal as well. In terms of the early childhood impact, he's put additional dollars towards preschool, but also towards the universal TK program. And so he, he has pushed that forward, so we'll start to see the multi-tiered or multi-year approach to rolling this out. So each year, you'll, you'll get a couple additional months within the TK program. So that is a high priority for his, for the governor. Another thing that the governor has put dollars towards is actually helping to fund the, the increase in the cost of living towards special education. One of the things that has happened over the years is we've started receiving things that they call a bifurcated COLA. What they would do is you might receive a COLA, a cost of living adjustment in your LCFF revenues, but you're not getting as high of a COLA on your categorical dollars in special education. And so they're not funding it enough. And so he, Governor Newsom, since he's come in, has recognized this and started to really push providing full funding for special ed. It's not probably ever going to get us to the full funding, obviously, but, you know, it's very much appreciated that he's providing the full 5.33% COLA and is providing some additional augmentation. I don't know if it will have any impact upon the Ross Valley School District, the additional augmentation, because our funds are in special ed are higher than the statewide averages, but we should certainly see that 5.33% COLA here in the county. The other thing that is really, really important to note is that within the governor's budget, he has provided funding for the universal meals program. That was one of those programs that a lot of districts weren't certain he was going to actually push forward, but with his budget, he did put that in there to ensure that we were fully funded. And what that means to the Ross Valley School District is that we would be providing next year two free meals per day, one in the morning and one at lunchtime, to all of our students at, at no cost. And so that is moving forward, and that program would, will be rolled out beginning July 1st in our district. And then finally, we talk about things that are not in his budget. One of the big things that districts have been asking for, and I talked about it very briefly and showed you the, the STERS and PERS costs are pension contributions. Those costs are going up, and the governor has not proposed any pension relief towards K-12 education. He has provided pension relief to the state, but has not provided any to K-12 education. And those are real costs that eat into our ability to offer programs and increase our costs in general. So it's, it's something that is difficult for us to, to deal with on the, the financial end, but it wasn't something that he put in. He did not augment our COLA above that 5.33%. He gave us the statutory amount that was required. In the current fiscal year, he did augment it and give us a higher amount than what we had been projected. That was primarily because in the previous fiscal year, he had actually not given us the full COLA as, as we should have, so he was making up for it. However, it's not something that we received in the current year. The other thing that is happening is because we are now going towards the universal meals for all, what that means is that there's no financial incentive for parents to be able to provide that financial data that would be necessary to, to understand if a child would qualify for free or reduced meals when looking at your unduplicated pupil percentages. And so districts that are in high unduplicated pupil percentage districts, they have that issue if they're, if they're already providing, under National School Lunch Program, provision two lunches, which would be already providing free lunches and breakfast to every child. Also, the CPP program, the community funding program for lunches, is another method that they would be able to provide those. Those are in low-cost areas. And so what happens is those districts would normally issue us, like a supplemental form for the LCFF. And there's an incentive for the parents, not personally, but it helps the district to qualify for additional funding under the LCFF for the supplemental or concentration grants. And it can be a lot of dollars for some districts. And so what he didn't do is provide any relief to those districts in UPP. It's not going to be a massive change for us because our unduplicated pupil percentage in the Ross Valley School District is 12% to begin with, and I don't foresee that changing a great deal. But, you know, it certainly could impact a district that might have 80 to 90% unduplicated pupils.
Sure.
And I know I went through that really fast, but.
Nice work.
I don't know if we have any questions.
Yeah, so, for example, the student nutrition and universal meals program, since we're moving away from the LCFF, will we still be able to participate in this? How does that work? Is there certain aspects of, of the governor's budget that it's kind of new to me as I sit here and look at this since we're, we're changing the way we get funded?
Yes. That's actually a really good question. We do have other districts in the county that are community-funded, such as Reed and Ross, for example, that are really high community-funded districts. And they traditionally have not been offering free meals under the National School Lunch Program. They're not participating in the National School Lunch Program. So for, for districts such as that, it's a little different because now there's an actual requirement from the state to actually put in an application and run a National School Lunch Program through your district so that you can qualify for some of those free federal and state dollars outside of this other universal meal program. So it's going to be a requirement for us to do it. And so it doesn't really impact us in terms of our local control funding formula revenues or our property taxes. It's just another requirement for us on the meal side. And it's actually run through a different fund altogether. It's under our cafeteria fund is, is what it is. It's Fund 13.
Along, along that line of the, in the program section, which are, I'm assuming kind of the categorical funding programs, right? In the past, some, you had made statements like, oh, when we go to community funding, AKA basic aid, you lose all categorical dollars. And there, you know, you've mentioned a couple of them, like the E-L-O-P and the early literacy and the early educator.
You still get them, but you get reduced amounts based upon what your unduplicated pupil percentages are, because that's really a measure of your English language learners and your poverty levels within the area, free and reduced meals.
Right.
And also your foster youth and homeless.
Is that the same for even, for all, for all of these programs?
Many of them are starting to be driven off of that. A lot of programs for a number of years have been driven off of our free and reduced meal counts. But once we went over to the LCFF model back in 2012, 2013, they began using the unduplicated pupil percentage.
Okay. So even if we're in basic aid, there's still, these categorical programs still come with?
Yeah.
You can still get that one and be, yeah, absolutely.
Because there was a discussion that I heard from another district that said, oh, no, if you've got, if your cup floweth over as a basic aid district, you have to use that over for these services. We're not going to give you more money because you're already getting more money than at LCFF level. Same as like with the TK, you know, that conversation around TK where a lot of the basic aid districts are choosing not to do TK because they don't get any additional funding for the additional kiddos in the TK program. And so that's just, I think that's something if we're a community-funded.
You still have the ability to, to qualify for them, but as you, as your unduplicated pupil percentage drops, your ability to get larger dollar amounts decreases. And so, or, yeah, so you end up with less and less money as you go down lower. So really what drives it is your free and reduced meals and your unduplicated pupil percentage.
And I think what we'll be watching for is as the governor's budget moves through the process, we'll be watching and listening really closely for any impacts that we're not anticipating because of our change in status beginning next year to community-funded. And so we'll be learning more and continuing to share with you all and talk with you all about what this means. And if, Chris, then what is the timeline for the state's budget to be approved?
I'm sorry about that.
Do you have like a step ball?
Yeah. Well, so the way it works is the governor puts out his January proposal for, for the next fiscal year. That comes out roughly around the middle of January. Then in the middle of May, we get what's called the May revised budget, which again is the governor's proposed information based upon the most recent data, and it will change from January. And again, it's still just a budget proposal. And then by June 30th, the legislature and governor must come up with a budget. And so we should know by June 30th what the final numbers are. However, we normally have to put together our budget, or we do put together, not have to. We have a requirement to, to sunshine, in essence, the budget at the first board meeting in January, in June, and then at the second board meeting in June, it would actually be adopted. And so we're, we're finishing up our budget in June, more or less with the final numbers from the May revise. So that, that's what we're doing. And then if there's any major changes at the adoption in June, we would actually make those adjustments at that time. Under the 45-day, if it's material, we would have 45 days from the point, from the point it's signed by the governor to get approval back from the governing board. And so that's how it would normally flow.
Got it.
One of the things that's also important for us to, to understand, and I didn't talk about it in the presentation, but now that they're adding this transitional kindergarten, they're having to re-bench the Proposition 98. And in essence, what they're doing is they're increasing the amount of Proposition 98 funding at the state level for K-12 education as a result of increasing our, the, the grades. And when doing that, it's really important as a basic aid district, how they And when doing that, it's really important as a basic aid district, how they get that into the LCFF calculator and how it flows through to us. Because if it ends up as a grade span adjustment, which is how it's projected to at this particular point, as a basic aid district, it will not help us and there's no additional funding. If they actually make it a categorically funded program at the bottom of the LCFF calculator in essence, it would actually provide additional funding to a basic aid district. At this particular point, it's been, what we've been hearing and being, what we're being told is that it's going to be a grade span. So it would not provide us any additional funding. But that is a key, key thing for us to really pay attention to at the legislature level.
Thank you, Chris.
Any other questions? So this then will be incorporated in the second budget revision that we'll see in March, March, right?
Yes, by the middle of March, we're required to have our second interim budget report, so it'll be at that particular, the first meeting in March.
March 1st? March 8th?
March 8th, I think.
Yeah, I think it's March 8th.
So we would put it in that.
Yep.
Okay. Any other questions?
And I'm happy to follow up with you regarding this misunderstanding of the categorical and the state aid, because this is, I can reconcile that for you.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, definitely.
All right, then we'll go ahead and move into the next agenda item, which is our racial equity updates and discussion.
Thank you. I'm very excited tonight, I'm able to give you our racial equity update. As you all know, that one of our highest priorities this year is to continue our work in racial equity and get that work closer to the classroom. And we're very happy this year, we have still to get her here to meet you all, but to work with Deborah McKnight, our racial equity consultant, and she is providing professional development. She does coaching for the administrators and any support to ENE, and also she is helping to facilitate our parent guardian racial equity task force. And so tonight's presentation is to just really provide an update on what we have been doing since our update that we provided back at the end of September. And tonight, Julia and Eric will have the honors to provide this racial equity update for you all.
Yes, absolutely. I'm very excited to provide an update this evening. And through our work with Deborah McKnight, very early in the year, we identified kind of our theme in the Ross Valley School District around our equity work of what gets this work closer to the classroom. And this evening, we are affirming the importance of our racial equity work and the efforts in progress that's been made by our principals, our teachers, our staff, our parents, our caregivers, in creating a trusting, inclusive community at the district site and classroom level that values and celebrates multiple perspectives. And I really just want to give such a big shout out to, in particular, our principals and our teachers who are digging and doing this work in order to get the work closer to the classroom. It's the people who are the closest to the classroom that are doing that work. And so I think we are now all familiar with our racial equity plan and what I'm going to be doing this evening is just providing you with some updates on some of the actions that we've identified for this year. So within the realm of professional development, two different actions, one around, well, both around professional development, really. And on January 3rd, we had a professional development day at our elementaries. Our middle school needed to make a change, and so they're actually having their professional development day in March, when our elementaries will be having their teacher work day. But at the elementary sites, they broke the day into two different parts, and for one part, they were really diving into their personal equity work, and teachers were given options of how they wanted to do that. So someone listening to podcasts, reading and reflecting, taking a look at Instagram accounts, and with the BIPOC of Marin, which is the stories of really students from around the county and some that went to White Hill and our elementary schools, and listening to voices. And so there was time for teachers to just dig in and do that personal work that we know is a part of everyone's equity work, and then to get to join together as a staff and have a conversation. And then the second part of the day was time for teachers to work on implementation of these different actions. And so most of the work was focused either around the social justice book bundles, the literature audit, or the history and heritage months. All right, and then in the area of curriculum, a couple of actions that I'll be updating you on. One is our book bundles, which we've talked about a lot, and the other is our examination of our literature canon. So we are, next week, on Wednesday, we have a district grade-level team meeting where all of our TK through fifth-grade teachers get together as a grade-level team, and that's where we're going to be launching the second set of our book bundle books. And for this round, we're going to be focusing on books that align well with Black History Month. And so I wanted to start just by sharing a little bit of a book that the first grade is going to be using with their students. First grade, the domain and the social justice standards that they're focused on is identity. And this is Jacqueline Woodson. She's a really well-known children's author. She's also written some adult books, just fantastic. And she has a story called "The Day You Begin." Can I open it, please? How do I do that part? I think that book does such a beautiful job of showing the power of literature for doing this work and just how we can really celebrate people through literature. And so again, this is a first-grade book, and it was selected by Julie McGuire. She's the book lead for first grade. And the social justice standard that it's aligned with is that students will express pride, confidence, and healthy self-esteem without denying the value, the value and dignity of other people. And that's a social justice standard that goes from TK all the way through 12th grade. But for our youngest kids, the grade-level outcome, what it looks like for a first-grade student is, I can feel good about myself without being mean or making other people feel bad. And then in aligning this work with our Reader's Workshop and the teaching points that we use within our classrooms, the teaching point that Julie selected or created was that readers will learn to empathize with others by understanding that everyone can feel different at times. And then you can see she's got some openers for the conversation, and this is, these are all excerpts from the conversation guide that goes along with the book. And there's a lot more to it. There's question prompts and extensions and things like that as well. Some really beautiful work on the part of our book bundle leaders, who are Janine Gallardo for kindergarten, Julie McGuire for first grade, Jenny Burt for second grade, Christina Workman for third grade, Nicole Stewart for fourth grade, and Casey Stocking for fifth grade. So just a huge thank you to all of them. They've written six different guides, and they're leading their colleagues at grade-level meetings in this work. And then this shows the other launches that we'll be doing next week, again, in alignment with Black History Month and the grade-level outcomes for each of the different grade levels. So we have our kindergartners, I feel good about myself without being mean or making other people feel bad, and our fifth graders, reading the ABCs of Black History, I know about the actions of people and groups who have worked throughout history to bring more justice and fairness to the world. So really beautiful work, and I'm excited for next week. And something that we are recognizing within our equity work is that representation really matters. I've always loved this photograph of the young girl taking a look at Michelle Obama. That was a great representative of all of us, but most particularly for young black girls. And we are spending time really looking, doing an audit of the literature that we read with our students, the literature that's on our classroom shelves and within our libraries, and just looking at it through an equity lens, and you can see different parts of the lens here. So looking, of course, at the author's race and ethnicity matters, when it was published, why we chose the book, the race or ethnicity of the different characters, and then also looking at other characteristics that are related to equity, that have different types of equity around gender, LGBTQ, and just, and looking to see, you know, how are people presented within a book? Are there stereotypes being used? You know, and really going more deeply into that. And through this process of using this tool, and other tools are being used as well, what's happening for teachers is that they're really developing the equity lens that they already had, so that when they pick up a book, that they're going to be reading with their students, they think about who's in this book? Who am I representing? Who haven't I represented? And that's been really significant work as well. All right. So our next area of our Equity Action Plan is school climate, and we're just going to talk a little bit here about this year's standardizing our approach to our celebration in History Months. And I tend to gather up resources and send them out at the beginning of each one of these recognition months for teachers. And what I always say is that we always want to center and celebrate all people all year long. Nobody should be relegated to one month. But because we have these months where we have recognition, it's important to honor that as well. And so one tool I've created for our teachers is, I've made a library for each month, and each one of these books in the library here that you see is linked to a read-alout. And so just an easy way for teachers to be able to share a story, again, also aligned with our book bundle work with their students. And I've really tried to make sure that the narrator of the story, the person who's reading the story, is a person, in this case, would be a black person, or ideally the author when possible. And I just wanted to give a shout out actually to both our music and art teachers, who, when on Wednesdays, our elementary teachers are focused on the social justice book bundle work, they've been really diving in and working on how to bring in diverse perspectives. And so this shows some of the artwork focused around Latinx Month and different styles of artwork that originate in different parts of Mexico. All right, and the area of academic achievement, one of our actions is to examine our accelerated intervention classes and opportunities for race and ethnicity, with the idea that academic performance data should demonstrate, should, that we shouldn't be able to predict where students land based on their race. And so this is just a little bit of data here for you. This includes all of our current seventh and eighth-grade students and their placement in math courses. And so these are by percentages, and recognize, of course, that we are a district that has more white kids than any other kids. The number here, the N, for example, for black or African-American is very small, but we see these same percentages every time we do this analysis. And so it really matters, no matter how small that N is, to take a look. And I think that when we look at this, we can see that you have a better chance of being placed in an accelerated course if you're a white kid or an Asian kid. And this is a part of the work that we're doing at White Hill right now around mathematics and that we're going to be diving into tomorrow. We have one of our math teachers in the audience here who's a part of this work as well. Sorry. Okay. More on community stakeholder engagement, and I think many of you know that we have a fabulous parent education evening we're going to be offering tomorrow. Two different people, look at their names, Charmaine Patterson and, what is her name? Misak? Misakki?
Miss Sasha.
There it is, okay. Thank you both guys. Are both going to be presenting an hour-long webinar. And Miss Sasha is the founder of the podcast Dear White Women, and she's also the author of a book called Dear White Women, Let's Get Uncomfortable Talking About Racism. And Charmaine runs an organization called Plinket that is designed to support parents and caregivers. And I'm really excited about what they're going to be bringing to us. They're going to be talking for about an hour and leading us through this idea of how to raise an anti-racist, and then there will be time for discussion. And at that, I'll turn it over to Eric.
So one thing that's really exciting, traditionally, you know, most schools will have a late spring survey that sort of gets, sort of kind of the end-of-the-year data, and, you know, it'll sort of be that sort of report card on their site plans and their LCAP, and that's all great, and we're going to continue to do that. But we feel the best practice is to be giving more information about how our students, faculty, and community are doing over the course of the year, especially given what we've all been through over the last two years. And we clearly understand, even the U.S. Surgeon General has declared a mental health crisis for American youth, given the effects of the pandemic. So the middle school team is already hard at work building a climate and wellness and equity survey, which they're going to be giving to all students in the next couple of weeks. And the purpose of that is to really gauge where our students are at in terms of their connectedness to school, their sense of well-being, their sense of close relationships with the staff, the sense of, you know, respect on the campus. And also questions that are very centered on race and equity and students' experience of that on campus. And so what I included here, this is from the middle school survey that's still in formation, so there might be some slight tweaks. These are just some of the questions, again, that are looking to capture some of these different areas of the student experience. How often do teachers encourage you to learn about people from a variety of races, ethnicities, and cultures? How confident are you that students at your school can have honest conversations with each other about race? How comfortable are you sharing your thoughts about race-related topics with other students at your school? And overall, how much do you feel like you belong at your school? And so, and these questions will be able to be disaggregated by students that have race and ethnicity that they identify and grade level. And then I've been working with the elementary principals to develop a elementary school survey, which will be the same across all four campuses for grades three through five, of the thinking being that K-1 and 2 are maybe a bit young to engage with kind of a survey module like this. And there will be similar questions in terms of their, the sense of understanding and acceptance on campus as it pertains to race and ethnicity. I had a thought, and then I kind of lost it. Oh, and again, this isn't like some type of gotcha thing, like, oh, my gosh. You know, surveys are this wonderful opportunity to, sure, see where there's areas for growth, but also to uncover the great work that is happening, to the many successes, to really look at where we can celebrate our strengths. We always know we're, we need to grow. We always know that we have to improve. That's a given. And we're going to be excited to share out these survey results and other work across the district and the realm of wellness and equity in the later spring. So stay tuned. And then, oh, yeah, and then one more thing, and this is just, this is a little blast from the past. One thing I'm so proud of our schools for pulling off last year in the spring was being able to do the Healthy Kids Survey. And this is actually very critical, too, from an accountability standpoint. We have a three-year TOPI, the Tobacco Prevention Grant. We have a three-year TOPI, the Tobacco Prevention Grant from the state. They require that we give the California Healthy Kids Survey as a part of the the grant responsibilities, which of course we'd give it anyway, even if we didn't have the grant. But this is a question that was asked last year. This is pertinent to just the seventh grade. I just wanted to show an example. This was a category of appreciation of racial and ethnic differences. And eighty percent of students reported strongly agree or agree with with students reporting positively on that. So again, that's just one metric that's from last year. The Healthy Kids Survey is a bit more limited because it was just fifth and seventh. Whereas this winter, we're going to be hearing from all third through eighth graders. And so anyway, I think again, it's it's going to be the the real work is going to be to bring it back for consideration to our staffs, to our community, because of course we know that the work to ensure greater acceptance and understanding happens at school. It happens in the community and of course it happens at home.
All right, and then our last area within our racial equity plan is systems and structures. And something that we talk about a lot and we know is very important to our community is hiring a diverse staff. And we know that all kids benefit a lot from having adults around them that don't look like them or come from different backgrounds and have different perspectives. And that's certainly something we want to support. And so a couple of things. One is in this kind of explore phase right now of what are some potential pathways? What are some things that we can do? We've been doing research and reading lots of articles. And what I bulleted here are some of the some of the bullets that really relate to Ross Valley because some of the suggestions aren't really within our locus of control. But this idea of a Grow Your Own program and looking at perhaps classified staff or local folk, sometimes within the parent community or outside of that, that we can encourage to join our Ross Valley team. It's been reported that those who are trying to diversify their staff have better luck if they are hiring earlier in the year. And our HR department is really working on making sure that we're ready to press go as quickly as possible this year. Partnering with local teacher preparation programs. One of the best ways to do this is by bringing in student teachers. And so we do have local universities that, you know, we already work with and bring student teachers in from. And some of those actually have really been working to diversify their own education students. And so we're hoping to make progress there. It's been a little bit difficult with COVID. It's hard to ask a teacher right now to invite another adult into their classroom. But we are working on that as well, including teachers of color in the hiring process in meaningful ways. But then recognizing that we have a limited percent of our staff that are teachers of color and we can't kind of overburden them with that. But the invitation being there and also, you know, talking to our to our teachers who come from different backgrounds and finding out if, you know, they have suggestions and such. And then they also recommend offering a comprehensive induction to support teachers of color. We have a really robust induction program. All of our teachers have the two years of induction support and often also have curriculum partner teachers that work to support them. And we really try to wrap around our new teachers to make sure that they feel very supported. And then ongoing professional learning for our teachers and making sure that that's available for them and and bringing to bear, you know, the different parts of the school and district climate that make people want to work here, including salary. So those are some things that we're thinking about and working on. And then just one thing we're trying that's new for us is we're going to be participants in a California Virtual Teaching Career Fair. And this polls, because it's virtual, prospective candidates from all across the state. And so no idea if that will pan out, but it's something new that we're trying. And that is our reputation on where we are with our equity work at this at this time. As you can see, we've got, you know, it's really broad, but it's also really directed. And I I feel like all of our arrows are going in the same direction. Every person that you talk to in this district, from classified staff, certificate staff, administrators, board members, we're on the same page. And I think we've made a lot of progress this year and have a lot of work to do. But we're on our way. I just want to say too, how thankful and grateful I am as the superintendent of this school district, have you Julia, really leading us in this work. Everything that you saw here tonight with our racial equity action plan, getting together with our parent guardians, putting on our teacher staff development days, organizing, all of this is Julia. And there is no way without you, Julia, we would be where we are today. And I know it takes all of us working together and getting those arrows aligned, but it also takes somebody who is able to move us along and put days, information, the amount of when you show me the libraries that you're creating and how they are interactive and how they are able to have teachers themselves be able to add to them. And that this really is an effort and with your leadership that we are going to truly see changes in our school district that get, as we're working this year, closer to the classroom. And as I've said many, many, many times, none of us would be here if it weren't for our children, our students. And we owe them, we owe all of our children and all of our students to be able to enter the social equity work and to ensure that all of our students have pathways. So Julia, just thank you. Huge appreciation. Thank you.
You very much.
Can I say something? I I think you got to take it a little further. The the truth, and I didn't mean to shut you off. I'm very, I love everything that you said, Marcy. But it's not just changes in the school district. This is changes in community, this is changes in county, this is changes in state, this is changes in a country, depending how deep you let this go. I have done nothing in regard to this work except love it and approve it and be proud of the work. I take no, no gain personally from me, but I I love it. When I was young, I was taught racism and I understood it quite quickly in 1977 with my mom, six years old, on the couch watching Roots. And I got so angry at what I was watching. I remember it changing me. I remember exactly what I felt. I remember I was old enough to comprehend what was happening. I was so mad and disgusted and angry with what I was seeing. And it portrayed as a six-year-old kid and my mom making me, not making me watch it, but anytime I could stay up after eight o'clock, I'd do it. And and it, that's how I actually got my bite of what was right and what was wrong from a lens that was trying to show our society something, right? And now I come home and I am lucky enough to have a fifteen-year-old and a thirteen-year-old daughter who actually can teach me about pronouns and why they're important and how they work. And they can teach me about my phone and they can teach me, Dad, when you do this, you know, this makes this easier, right? So as adults, we sometimes get set in our mindset. We get set in our fashion, we get set in our music and we very often get set in our ideologies. And this type of work really allows a younger generation to take the effort and the work, not necessarily the parents and the older people in the community, but the kids take this information and move it way beyond, as Marcy said, our district. They move it into the threads of who they are. They move it into the threads of how they talk to each other. They move it into the threads of how they talk to strangers. They they move it into how they think and live their lives. And so this work is much, much, much bigger, in my opinion, than what you have done personally. And it's much bigger than any one student gets and it's much bigger than just us. This type of work is actually setting the groundwork for what will be just fact and truth. Like recycling was thirty years ago. Now it's just common sense that we have, this is that work. And like I said, I have no, I did nothing here. But I absolutely adore this work and I think it's probably some of the most important work that I've seen since I've been on the school board.
Thank you.
I also wanted to add on to just the acknowledgement. And I know taking the time to come to us and also to come to the public who, even if they're not sitting here, can come back to this information at any time to watch this and to hear about it. Because I know that it does take time to put these presentations together and to give us a better, deeper understanding of what's happening in the classroom. So I appreciate the time spent helping us understand it because I do think in our role in supporting not only the curriculum, but also building our own equity lenses, our policy, on funding allocation, you know, our stewardship in the domains that we are responsible for, which is not to micromanage curriculum. You guys are doing an amazing job, but to support that, right? And to complement it with our role. And so the more that we understand it and work our own equity muscles and lenses out, I think the more aligned it can be. So I really do appreciate. And specifically, just calling out specifically some things that I noticed in the presentation that I really just want to call and appreciate is connecting the book bundles with the social justice standards and the example that you gave. In my mind, I was just thinking of like, gosh, could we get those teachers that you're talking about to do? And maybe they're already doing it during open house nights and things like that so that the parents can experience, just like somewhat we did with the little video, but then experience those questions themselves. Because I think it really deepens the understanding because I've had a couple of people who mentioned, oh, those book bundles. And thinking of it very superficially, like, oh, it's just something in the library or literally a bag of books that is handed to the teacher and feeling, you know, that conversation of being performative versus really deep work. So tonight it was very clear and I appreciated coming back with that clear example because I think that really deepens everybody's appreciation for what the work is and what's showing up for the kids in the classroom, especially for people who might not have kids specifically in those classrooms. So really, and the other example was the way that you described the data that you're looking at as a as an inquiry tool for learning and as a tool to look at persistent trends, not just an individual snapshot, but to really look at those persistent trends and have those, have it be that spark of question of why is this? What might we do to change and shift this? So that it's not a predictor of outcomes for our students year after year after year after year. So I just, very clear of the kind of thoughtful, deep way this work is moving forward.
And I do want to specifically thank as well our parent equity, parent guardian equity partners who've been, you know, engaged with us in a conversation, pushed us in ways that we needed to be pushed and really have helped to direct this work. So a big thank you to them as well.
I had a couple of comments and one question. So last time you came and presented us the plan, what I liked then and I still like it now is that you pick on a few actions instead of showing us like the forty-two actions. And I do like that because I think it make us grounded on a few things that we are talking about today, not just the forty-seven action items, but those are the one. And I think because you are presenting it this way, I think it make it real and I think it's, it takes us a moment to pause and to understand what it actually means. So I think this is meaningful and I think that's appropriate to this type of work. I liked very much the, and I think I'm good to take this one home, about the grade level outcome and the fact that that, and I'm thinking, I want one for my ninth grader, my eighth grader, my twelfth grader and my husband would be good as well. Thank you so much. I would think that's just an interesting way to to think about about that. And I think this is something we can bring home as community members. And the question I have is, do you need money for more books? And I'm saying that as being an ex, you know, board member of the YES Foundation, where we were always talking about, we need more books. And and I work in other districts as well, where we're all saying we need more books. And I'm thinking, we probably need more books, but what type of books do we need? And I'm thinking that certainly some good conversation to have about is there a need and that might be a good kind of fundraising strategy there. Like there is probably need to 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 get the new books or to change some of that. And I'm thinking this is definitely something we can, I want to to hear about for the next couple of years about investment in those books, books canon. I've never heard that terminology. It's like, okay, we probably need to get more of those books, the white books, you know what I'm saying, like just diversity books. So I just want to talk about that.
And both Marcy and Chris, like because this is our focus, the the budget has been prioritized in this way. And in the year of my, we need more books. We've been getting more books, but I'm sure the need will always be there. And there's such, the the publishing market right now is just exploding with extraordinary books. And so we have to continually upgrade or add to our libraries because there's just such fabulous literature from so many different perspectives that's coming out right now.
Okay. I would keep asking about book spending.
I was going to say, just as a parent of two students in different schools, it's been fascinating just to see how effective the program and implementation has been. I don't know how it's how it's being communicated to them. But my kids, they come home and will like just be talking about these books and stories they're reading. And it's really interesting, the stuff that they're reading. And it's leached over until like their personal reading time where they're like asking me for specific books that are like by the same authors that they've been suggested at school. And it's just, it's really interesting to me to see how how they're kind of just naturally picking up and kind of gravitating towards those those topics now.
That's the best is when the kids come home with it. That's when we know we made it into the classroom.
Yeah, absolutely. I've been on the board long enough to know that the growth in this area is remarkable and very welcome.
Is it happening?
And I think in closing, in closing this out, and I know I've mentioned this before, but the other part of, I believe, our role to support and step into this going into the future will be to look at, and I mentioned it before, so it's not like broken record, but I know we'll, we'll, we'll move it forward, is to look at how we can institutionalize this work so that as staff changes and as things happen and that it doesn't fall off the radar just because there are people in these seats who believe this is, you know, who are who are moving this forward, that it becomes part of our board policies, it becomes part of our institutionalized structures. And I think that's part of our role as board members to maybe look at how we, how we support this work in that way. In addition to the words that we say when we're here, but to anchor it in perpetuity and sustainability, both from a budget standpoint, but then also a policy.
And there is a board policy that we're beginning to look at and looking at how we might be able to bring it back. And so that will be coming forward soon. I think that, you know, the board, board policies do provide that overarching framework. And board policies are put in place, they're created, put in place, not just because they're laws, but also because they represent what is important to a school district and what we are all about. And so we have a lot of board policies on the books and there is one on equity specifically that Julie and I are beginning to delve into. So it's, and it is interesting because the draft that we've reviewed, so gamut, as you all know, you have some policies tonight on consent, is the entity through the California School Board Association that puts together board policies based on, say, they do all that culling of law and of all those types of things that can come forward. And there's so many elements of this sample policy that completely match our racial equity mission statement.
They're wonderful.
And so the work that we did for that, it's represented. So there's probably not a whole lot of tweaking or a whole lot of addition that we need to do to this board policy because we already have it. So the first step that we took in this district is to first identify and really call out the importance of racial equity work in the district. And then to work on creating and crafting with stakeholders, all of our partners, to help craft that message, including you all here. And so that is the first thing that that we do. And then the work follows from there. And so, yes, so stay tuned for a policy to be on the books. And one of the reasons that we're looking at a policy as opposed to a proclamation And one of the reasons that we're looking at a policy as opposed to a proclamation as an example, we may do one of those as well. But a proclamation is just something that may happen at a board meeting and then it sits as in the history of that board meeting. But a policy is something actually that guides and helps to move us forward in that matter. So right now we're looking at the policy. A proclamation may come because they're very important too.
Or a resolution, sometimes a resolution to adopt a policy adds the context and the reasoning behind why you're adopting a policy. So bringing those two together can anchor it in the work that's already been done as well as the anticipation of how it carries forward. So we can look at that and it could be great. Appreciate, appreciate that.
This work is definitely something that is not just a one or two or three year. This is a perpetual because race is something that you don't ever, as Deborah tells us, don't ever quite arrive. It is something that you work on and work through your entire life. And it is personal work first and foremost to understand and to make those individual shifts and changes in thinking and in believing and in feeling and then in action. And so that's a lot of the work that we're doing. And it's hard to talk about race. It's one of the elements that Deborah's working with us on and it's being able to talk about it. It's very difficult to talk about because we're, as a white person, is raised to sometimes not see race. And so it's very important that we do, how can we honor and acknowledge people, individuals and others if we don't acknowledge them for their skin color and all the traits that they may have and everything about them. So that's where the tomorrow night's parent guardian education event that's happening, it also will help to give parents tools to be able to talk about race in the home. To join us in that partnership. So very excited about this work.
Looking forward to it. And we are, we are.
Absolutely invited.
Thank you.
From my calendar.
Waiting out for you all receiving. You're able to hear it then.
Anything else? Any other?
No.
All right. Thank you. Let's go ahead and move to our next item, item E3, which is a discussion and information on the real properties overview and the long range planning. Another, another long range agenda item. Marcy, yeah. So thank you.
And so what we wanted to do tonight is to bring forth a conversation and do an overview of all of the property that the district owns. And we haven't had this conversation with our new trustee series, even as Chris and I are new in our roles or to the district. And we wanted to bring back because as probably every single agenda item we have on tonight is about stewardship of this school district and making sure that we're all aware of every aspect of your role as trustee and our role as staff is to ensure, and as Shelley talked about in her opening, under the Pledge of Allegiance, is the stewardship and guiding forward and your care and consideration of this school district for the generations to come of all students. And so we wanted to do tonight is to go over the facilities, the property that the district does own. And we then wanted to talk about some of the considerations as we go through them. So some of our property is in use as schools or as offices. Others are, have been deemed surplus by prior boards many years ago. And they may be sitting vacant. They may be, have some kind of use. And so we'll go over that tonight too. You may have a lot of questions. There may be more information that you want. So this, tonight is not an agenda item in which is just an overview and a one and done. This is the beginning of long and continued conversations so that you all can help determine and make those determinations as to what's in the best, the district's best interest for the use of its properties. And so what we're looking at tonight is in these considerations of our properties is of course costs of deferred and routine maintenance. You must maintain your facilities. So what are those various costs? And what are all the elements to them and things that are either in law or need to be considered? And then of course, everything, money, the cost. Community demographics. What is our community looking like? Where are we aging out? We know that, as any of you may have been on Dr. Willis's Health and Human Services calls around the pandemic and really those elements that we did to move forward vaccinations in town was because of our aging populations. We have a high population of older folks. But as those folks do age, then what is the incoming demographics? And how many of the families are folks moving in? Will they eventually have kids in our schools? And then of course, around that enrollment trends. So what are we looking at in terms of our students coming into the district and filling our schools? And then of course, there's the housing element. And the housing element isn't something that we are responsible for, but municipalities are responsible for creating and maintaining, developing, planning for a housing element. There are requirements in law around that. So we'll talk about that a little bit tonight too. And then any changes to use. So if, as an example, a site is not currently in use, but we will determine at some point that it needs to become into use, then what are all the ramifications and considerations that need to be had about that? Or any changes? We need to add a building to a school, a classroom because of increases. So there are lots to consider. And these are just some of them. They may not be all. So these are just some that we identified tonight for conversation and for consideration to get the thinking out there. So that's what we'll be looking at tonight. And so Chris and I are going to go through this presentation. What we got to do is really have this be a discussion. There's no action taken on this item tonight. It's a discussion. So questions that you might have, really seeking to understand about this topic and then also, just like we did in our last couple of board meetings around the budget, we'll be taking questions and there may be things that we need to delve into more and bring back to you at a future meeting and so on. And as I said, because Chris and I are new in these roles, although I've been in the district and I've been participating in conversations for years, there's certain things that I have to go back and look into and revisit to better understand. So that's where we are. So Chris?
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity to discuss these real properties of the Ross Valley School District. The district currently has eight properties throughout the district. And you can see them listed here. We have the current Red Hill School Site that we're at right now for the district office. We have Brookside School and Wade Thomas School. The reason we've listed those three together in that order is those are the San, I'm sorry. There's also Hidden Valley there that shows San Anselmo. But the first three are actually within the city or the town boundaries of San Anselmo. Hidden Valley School is actually within the boundaries of the county of Marin. And then when you get to the numbers five through eight, Manor through Fairfax Tennis Courts, those are all within the town of Fairfax. So we have three different entities that we serve. I'm going to stand up just for a few minutes here.
At any point, at any, you have questions you want to review, you have a question. Yeah, please don't hesitate.
I was just going to go with the Red Hill. I know it's called Red Hill School and it just made me think, oh, do we have a naming convention? Because this is no longer a school, but if somebody who had no idea what you, and just looked at this list, they would say, oh, you've got one, two, three, four, you know, X number of schools. So just, not that we have to solve it tonight, but it might be something that we think about is how we name each site, just for clarity. So.
This next slide actually shows the entire boundaries of the Ross Valley School District. We are in this general area over here of Red Hill. And as you look at it, we have, or actually we're over here. We have Wade Thomas down at the bottom and you have Brookside here. So this is the town of San Anselmo. You have Hidden Valley up here, which is the county of Marin. And then you have Deer Park, which is also a closed school that we have. You have the tennis court, which is in the center of town, which is actually owned by the Ross Valley School District. It's on the, a portion of the site that used to be the central school, I believe is the name of it. We get into town of Brookside. And you have Manor and White Hill. And so we just kind of wanted to show you maps of what the schools and site locations look like. And we're going to go in that same order, non-alphabetical order. So when looking at Red Hill School, this particular map is of the current location. And we're actually in this building right here, which is the old closed site that was Red Hill Middle School. And so we are located here. We have our maintenance yard down here in the corner and our old district office here. What you'll notice is that we've also drawn it around the field down below and the dog park. And that is because those actually were part of the Red Hill School grounds at one time as well. And through a process we went through and the TAM district does now control those properties. They purchased it. But they have, the Ross Valley School District still has a right to those properties. If we were ever to open back up Red Hill School as a school site, we would have the ability to purchase back that property.
I think it was purchased for a dollar.
It was purchased for a dollar.
Under a memory and a mode of understanding.
Correct.
So is there a right of first refusal to re-acquire? So we don't actually have it as a capital asset on our books, but we have a right to re-acquire? Okay. Thank you for that.
I just wanted to make sure that that's noted. So what we do have is this line that kind of goes through here and more or less shows you the boundaries of the current Ross Valley School District.
And this was the middle school for the San Anselmo School District before the two merged, correct?
Correct.
One other quick question. If they own and have site control, are there agreements as to what they can and can't do with that? I mean, right now it's clearly used as a field and a dog park, which is fairly low intense. It's not built infrastructure. Are there limitations on, in other words, that keeps it not expanded into a shopping mall or something that we might have to undo if we wanted to use it as school? Or do you know anything about that?
Yes. So back when, when the conversations were being had and the agreement was made, is it is to be used for field space for the Tamalpais Union High School District, specifically our two williams.
Okay.
And for that. And then they do have facility use agreements. And so they do rent to other folks to utilize that field.
Okay.
And so on. And then the dog park is actually part of the town of San Anselmo. It is not part of the Tamalpais Union High School District.
But no, they don't have unrestricted use of these properties. They can't use them for other purposes.
It's restricted to the uses that they are.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
So this is the Red Hill School.
Yep.
And looking at the Brookside School, one of the things that becomes difficult when using Googler is the lines do disappear when looking at trees. So I apologize. But as we look at the boundaries of Brookside School, what you'll note here is.
Butterfield?
Butterfield. I did the same thing to you earlier. This is Butterfield that goes along here. This is the parking lot. And so this is a little strip of land that we do have. So that's one area. And then you've got the Broadmore entrance or Brook.
Brookmead.
Brookmead.
Brookmead. Yes.
I did that again earlier.
That's okay. It's a part of the town.
So it's in this area. And what's really important to note is that the entire school site really is built out. We're using the entire acreage for the school. This is Wade Thomas. And Wade Thomas is over here at Tom Ross. And this is Sir Francis Drake. The one thing I want to point out is that it looks like it's dirt in this area and it was during this photo of Google Earth. But that was as they were doing the construction. And this whole area.
Oh, yeah. That's a playground.
Yeah. We now have what we call the Gen seven buildings down here in the corner. And we have the.
Play structure.
Play structure. We have the asphalt and the rest of it. So looking at this particular campus, this particular campus is also completely used, the entire acreage. This is the Hidden Valley Campus. And as we look at Hidden Valley, you have the entrance that is right in this general area. And this is the turnabout. And when looking at it, you have a tennis court that's here and basketball courts and also the field. We had actually, at one time, sold the rights to that to the county of Marin as well. And so they actually do have some authority over it, even though we control it. The reason they bought it was that they were fearful that at one time there were considerations where it was actually closed, the Hidden Valley Campus. And they wanted to make sure that the land was kept open and not closed up. So the purpose is to make sure that it remains available to the community. So that's the reason you have that.
And that also, as you may remember, when we were going through the bond capital improvement projects, a lot of conversations about where on the Hidden Valley Campus, campus, the new buildings would be placed because of that area that we're not able to build upon. It is not in play.
So as you look at it, this is our multipurpose room. And you have the other main buildings in this area. And you do have a small parking area back here. And also you have solar panels that are on the hillside. But there is this flat area right up at the very top, which at one time was like a horse car hall, but.
Not the school district.
No.
No? A neighbor.
Yes. But it is his property that's part of Hidden Valley Campus.
This is a more picture too.
Is there easement, is there an entrance easement on that back area behind the classrooms over?
Right off of Fawn.
Right off of Fawn or is there an access road easement there? Right? Correct? Okay.
There's a few other things too we can get into, like from Hidden Valley Court. There's another entrance.
Yeah. So right there, right off of where the office is, up a little bit.
There's one right here.
Okay. Yes. And one, yeah. As you travel back up around to the back by the.
I think it's this one.
Yes, you're right. And then there is also a little bit of, there's that parking that we have, that little gravel parking area. And then there's some grass that's right in front of it before you get out to Green Valley.
Is that on that same side or is that on the other side?
It's on the side where the gravel is. Yeah.
Oh, right along that.
And it's mostly runoff kind of where creek overflowed.
Sometimes it floods and there's creek.
There's actually a creek that flows down this way when you get heavy rains. And there's a drain that's just off the more property. And then there's also a district drain if it overflows that's like over in this general area.
Okay. So some sort of a runoff swale kind of thing?
Oh.
Good to know where those things are.
I quickly learned where everything was in October.
Yeah, I said. When you were wearing your rubber boots.
Bless you.
This is Manor School. And this is another one where the.
The trees.
The trees really played havoc with the lines and I need to apologize. So this is Oak Manor Drive here and this is Sir Francis Drake. And the entrance to the office is right here. You've got your kindergarten compound up here. But what you can't see is that the property line actually darts up this hill. And so we own a fair amount. It's across the creek and up that hill a little ways. And it comes down to basically a straight shot. And so there is some area over in here that is not used for school purposes. This is the White Hill Middle School. And here you've got Land Drive that comes and ends back up in here. And here you've got Glen Drive that comes and ends back up in here. And this is Sir Francis Drake. You have Lefty Gomez Field here. If you're looking at it, you've got the front and the campus here. And up at the top here is the area, there's a gate that you can enter here and go up top. So that would be the area that is used for like overflow parking when we're doing our, our promotion ceremony at the end of the year.
Open house.
Open house.
We get there.
Doctor's school.
Yeah, parking along that road, along the, along that is challenging with these big events.
And it's hard enough to get out of Glen Drive here on Sir Francis Drake at the end of the day as well. It's a pretty heavily, early in the morning traffic area.
And also it can be kind of dangerous. I remember when I was assistant principal at White Hill, because of the way that the sun sets in certain times of the year.
Oh, yeah.
It's really dangerous.
Oh, you're right.
And there was actually, back, I think there was even then somebody more recently killed along there. But there was back when, when I was at White Hill. And it's, it can be tricky because of the way the sun, and as you're heading out towards Westmoren, there's, yeah.
Yep, that's a tricky one, yeah.
Are there any arrangements or agreements with the Lefty Gomez Field in terms of site use agreements? Or capturing water stuff or anything like you've talked about with the other two?
That water basin is right over there on the left, that big, that big square on the left, on the, on the map? No, just keep it on the left.
Further?
Further up, the big giant square, yeah.
That's the old site.
That's where the new...
That is the new flood control.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we also have the creek that kind of goes through the middle of campus as well.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, right, yeah, the creek. That you know that as well.
But that's not the one that was problematic for us.
It's the one that comes down. They, they, the down one, yeah.
Right along the front.
Just next to Karen's class.
Yeah.
Karen's class from just there?
So we've got the driveway here.
Yeah.
Where we had the overflow from the creek was literally...
But there, along the road, right, yeah.
And then it just went right through the middle of campus from there.
And we also have...
Water, water don't care.
That creek off of the field.
Oh, okay, so it flowed all the way through down into the creek.
And the other thing that we have, and this is kind of older as well, because you don't see the 300 building here.
Yeah.
But between the 200 and the 300 building, we had runoff up the hill that was coming down to the center of campus. So we were getting flooding, basically coming from those two areas.
Because it is kind of in a basin there between the two hills coming down into there.
And a royal.
It's in Cuvet, yep.
So this is White Hill Middle School.
Yeah, love it.
This is Deer Park. And I apologize, I'm trying to get, capture the location a little bit as well. Deer Park School is down here at the bottom. It's at the end, end of Deer Park. And the property kind of goes out into this area over here as well. Obviously, again, if you've got trees, there's no use even bothering to put a line because it's not going to show. But this is the Deer Park location.
What's the approximate acreage, Chris?
I would have to actually look at that.
That's okay, that's okay.
But those are good, I mean, I think part of this is to gather all of those kinds of...
Yeah.
So we can have a full table of total number of acres, site considerations, absolutely. You know, so I think those are the kinds of things in terms of understanding zoning and how big it is and how much is flat and all of that.
Looking back to that first page that you said of the listing?
Yeah.
We had the, the bridge on a number of...
There was no acreage on, on Deer Park or on Red Hill.
Red Hill.
But the, the diagram right on the back of that shows, the key says other property. Is it, is it limited to the, the red that is our actual property? Or is it, when it comes to Deer Park, is it the entire green area including the red?
I'm going to go back to that slide.
Can you get the map slide?
Yeah, that one there.
I believe it's just the purple.
The, the, okay, the purple.
It's kind of like a lollipop.
Okay.
Because I, because we, it is, I think the property also includes the small sliver leading up to the bulled out kind of area there, so...
Okay, so it's not a substantial amount of acreage.
No, but it is something I need to look at. I need to look at the acreage of that Red Hill and also the tennis courts, although the tennis courts aren't very large.
Tennis court acreage.
That's most due to...
Two courts.
Yeah. Not very many.
So how, yeah, where are the Fairfax Tennis Schools? How do you access, I didn't even know there was tennis court there. How do you access those tennis courts?
It's right across the street from the town hall, I mean, from the Woodin Center. Literally, there's a street that's a small...
In Perry Park.
It's a small street. This, this park here, this, there's a building right, so this is the main street. And you take a little thing into here. The town, the women's center is right here. The women's center where the town meets, where town is all meeting. So there's a park here. And then there's a bridge that goes over there, but it's a bridge over this creek.
Oh, my goodness.
So it's really here, this is the main street, it's here to here.
I need to go on the street trade. Okay, cool, thank you.
So, so kind of describing that to everybody, we have the Fairfax Tennis Courts here. To access it, you have School Street, which is right here. And the city hall is down in this corner, more or less, right next to Perry Park. Can you just come along?
It's past Perry Park.
Yeah, so it's like...
Yeah, it's really part of Perry Park. In fact, you could, you play horseshoes behind the women's center. You can see the basketball court and the tennis courts right there.
Got it, got it.
And it's, it's a dead end little, it's not even really a street, it's a cul-de-sac kind of thing. I believe it used to be, maybe there was a street that went all the way through over to School Street?
I don't think it was a street, but I do think, but it was a, it was an over, there's a...
Bridge.
There was a bridge then.
There is now two.
Yeah, we were wondering if it may have been when that was Central School. And if there were a parking lot there, because the field was probably where it always was.
Yeah.
Because the field was a school. And that was the school site.
School Street Plaza.
School Streets Plaza was a school.
Oh, my goodness.
And there was actually some, an MOU with an easement to a property that was down in this area at one time for us to be able to drive through to get to our parking lot back there. So I believe it was a parking lot for...
And who's using that tennis court? Is it the Town of San Francisco managed by recreation or?
What's the agreement on that?
It is the Town of Fairfax.
Okay.
And they, they do all of the work to maintain.
Uh huh, yeah, okay.
But, but we own it, unlike the other, right?
We, we do own it.
Oh, we're still on it, yeah. But they manage it.
Okay. No idea you have tennis court.
I know.
It's very fancy. Just looks like, and then, yeah, and some horseshoes somewhere.
That really goes through the, the properties and so you can kind of see it visually. That's why we wanted to show those.
Oh, yeah.
And so we can answer those questions because I knew that was going to come up. How do you get to those tennis courts?
Well, I'm sorry, just like, okay, where is that thing?
You've got to come to Fairfax. You've got to get over there.
I am coming.
I've driven around it pretty extensively.
I'm going to get my shots and go.
Delivering food out to families as we were in the pandemic. So I actually knew how to get there.
Okay. I know very well.
So in terms of looking at costs of deferred and routine maintenance, that's one of the things that you always need to pay attention to. And when we look at it, and I think I'm going to sit down now. The one thing that we, we have in our budget is called the Routine Restrictive Maintenance Account. And that is our, it's a categorical fund. It's in our general fund and it's resource number 8150. But it, it is funded through a contribution or an encroachment from the general fund unrestricted. And we're required to set aside 3% of our general fund for that purpose. And that, that is just something that we do as a matter of fact. And it's, it's a requirement within statute. If you've ever received any state modernization funds, and pretty much everybody in the state has. So we have that requirement. And for us, at first interim budget, that is $792,000 roughly. And so that, that, those funds are then to be used for specific purposes. And the very first thing that you have to, to spend it on is your deferred maintenance. So any deferred maintenance projects that you might have. Such as if you had to replace a roof, asphalt, painting, those types of things, carpeting. Those would be funded out of this particular account. The other thing that gets funded out of it are your maintenance staff and any benefit costs. So your salaries and benefits for those staff. And any maintenance supplies that they might have that are used to maintain those facilities on a routine basis. So those are the general funds and how we get those dollars. And so you do have a 3% requirement. And, and that tells you how we get our money. And so what it, what we have to do is always balance the needs of the district versus how much money we actually have available. And so that, that's, that fine balancing act that we have in the Business Services Division with the Maintenance Department every year. And that's something that happens in every district. The other thing that's important to note is community demographics. And this particular slide looks at the demographics, which is the total population within the Ross Valley School District over the last three cycles of the census.
Census, yeah.
And so as you look at it, we do have a slight increase in the total population over that period. It's not a huge increase, but it is roughly 800 people over that period. The other part of the, the community demographics, which is important, is to look at the age of the population. And so this is what the, the last census looked like. And when looking at it, what you really need to key in at is what age of the population is outside of school age. And what you notice is there's a really large percentage that is in the 40 to 70 plus range within the Ross Valley School District. And just a small amount that is within school age children. And, and an even smaller percentage under five.
It's like 60% of the population over 40 years old.
It is, it's a, it's a massive percentage.
The shape is also interesting, I mean, trend, trend line shapes are also interesting to look at. Where from the 40 to 70 is this kind of large curve, whereas the ones below it kind of go up and down and up and down. So thinking long term, I think one of the things for us to always keep in mind is to think long term and to think that kind of long in decade, especially with facilities, right? You're thinking in decades and multiple decades, not a three-year budget cycle, which sometimes even feels long because we're looking at spending money on things tomorrow. But this is a nice way, I mean, this is a long decades, long type of time scale. And to, that's when you can really pull back and start noticing that there are trends and fluctuations that need to be in our mind for facilities of a long-term nature.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Thank you.
And this next slide actually...
It's the one I wanted to see, thank you. I mean, I'm like, okay, good luck to see it, friend, exactly.
So this actually, again, looks at those, the census data over the, those three periods. And what you notice as you go from the 2000 to the 2019 information is that in the top three brackets, your percent of population that is aging is becoming larger and larger and larger. And what that means is that we have an aging community that, they don't have school age children. If you're 70 plus, you're generally not going to have school age children. If you're 50 plus, your chances of having children are, are smaller. And so that really does have an impact upon us and does have that cycle feel. Because eventually the community will change and we'll start to get younger again, but you have to go through that process.
Well, it's happening right now. Obviously, I mean, you see that graph, you understand that the older people are here and they're taking their equity and they're going to cash out or pass on. And someone new is going to come in and buy that. You don't really, everybody says it's going to get smaller, but we really, we really don't know how that turnover is going to go.
But it is going to happen. I think I had heard that the, the peak of the aging is around 2030, in terms of the bulk of that population move. And it starts shifting at around 2030. And again, those are long-term time scales. And if you also look at the voting population, older adults are a higher percentage of civically engaged voting population. And vote, community members when it comes to lots of decision-making around.
All of this data is really valuable, though, when you're looking at your facilities because you start looking at it and it starts to make sense why you're seeing declining enrollment.
Well, that, you know, if I can get in here, it's not too long ago where I heard a prior board come telling us of how this massive mass of kids was coming in and we had to open a school. And you're only as good as your data and you're only as good as the people delivering your data. And you're only as good as the facts that, that actually are delivered. Because it wasn't too long ago that it was pitched that we have a massive influx of students coming and we have to think about opening more schools. And all of a sudden, we have to close a kindergarten class, you know, four years later because we don't have enough kids coming in. So great information to have, real data, real time is real, is...
But it's important to keep revisiting it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
You know, the, the projections are one thing, but you need the real-time data and information to help solidify.
And also to, to, to share the fact with the community. Because people who've heard that and were sold that information probably didn't really think about it again. I mean, it's not in the front of their minds and they're not going out actively looking for that information.
Well, we have a slide a little later that'll show kind of what our, our full capacity is. And we were right there at one time.
So this is, this is a slide that I've shown in the past. This shows our, our enrollment trends over the last few years. And you do see the downward trend. And so as we look at it, this oftentimes, when looking at it from a fiscal perspective, is what we're looking at and what we're thinking. And we get that fiscal, basically blinders put on in terms of our enrollment. And so what's really important is to actually look at this.
Yes, this is the one.
A much longer...
I was going to say, do you have a bigger one?
Yeah, like telescoping out, just like you were saying. It's all a matter of perspective.
And so this slide shows 21 years worth of data and information. So going straight this school year, going back to 2000, 2001 year. And, and what we know in Ross Valley is through the time that I've been here, is that we tend to go through these 10 to 12 year cycles of dips and valleys and peaks in our, in our enrollment. And what's interesting to note is that the trend has kind of slipped away from that in terms of our dip. It's now looking like a 16 year. So whatever may have been the historical, looking back of the Ross Valley School District, it's not holding any longer to the 10 to 12 years, but we're, we're taking a little bit more time with that. And so the, the, what we know in terms of the demographic studies is, and we've talked about this in previous forums this year, is that the, the state of California is losing population. And what has been predicted is that by the 2000, by 2030, we will have roughly 11 fewer, 11% fewer students in the state of California. Marin though is a state that is going to have more of a precipitous drop of up to 14%. And so it's important to look at that, like what might that impact be on our schools? And so what we know from looking at projections moving on into the future is that this year we have 1748. And what we're anticipated to have by the 2028, 29 school year is 1,581 students, which is 165 roughly fewer students than we have this year. So when looking at those projections, there will be a year in which we kind of bump up a tiny bit, but then the decline continues on through 2028, 29. And so if that does hold true, as we were just talking about a few minutes ago, as Ryan was mentioning, will those projections, that's, you know, eight years away, will that hold true? We don't know, but we're starting to already collect our enrollment for next year, registrations. And we'll be asking families soon whether they'll be staying. So we'll start to see if we even see the projections count out. But if that is the case, then what we know, and I'm trying to find it, I thought I had it written here. If I have what our capacity was. Our full capacity, yes, there it is. All right, so our school facilities, the, the school facilities that we actually own and operate today, Brookside, Hidden Valley, Manor, Wade Thomas and White Hill.
Yeah.
The capacity of those schools is 2,328. So keep that number in mind and take a look at where on this map that was in the... So keep that number in mind and take a look at where on this map that was in the two thousand fourteen, fifteen school year. We were just eight students short of capacity. We had two thousand three hundred and twenty. So right there, when we were passing our previous bond and those projections, we really did see that peak in the Ross, an all-time high for at least going back twenty-one years of looking at the enrollment in the district. So we do have that capacity. Then looking at going forward, if we do end up with the projected potential of our numbers, you know, fifteen eighty-one, then, you know, we would, we definitely have plenty of space for our students at this time. But we don't, what we don't know is if that decline in the state of California or Marin is going to hold true, what will be our next time where we start to increase? And that's why it's another element, oh, that's a word, housing element, is something to look at. But let's stop, before we go, let's see if any questions around projections or enrollment or this data here.
Well, I'm, I'm obviously doing my favorite activity, which is comparing data. And what I'm finding interesting is that when you compare now where we are versus twenty years ago, we fairly seem, we are exactly at the same level.
I forgot to say that.
Versus the, the demographic is very different based on this paper. So either people have more kids, there is something, old people were, where they were younger before and they were sending their kids to private school, you know what I'm saying? Something else is not told here in the, the story because very definitely, if we had a younger population twenty years ago and the same number of kids, then, you know, it's, it's something else that I'm just.
It's not just about the aging.
It's not just about the aging. So is it like the housing? Is it, is it the type of people who are living here? Is it, I don't know.
More kids per household, things like that.
Are we attracting more, maybe like more younger parents versus more younger people before, you know, is there like some kind of, yeah. That seemed to be more optimistic. When I see that, if I compare that, I'm like, okay, we just may not be doing that bad after all. It's very small to, to learn about the community. And I was thinking about the housing element, obviously, as well, but there's definitely more to it than just a demographic.
And then the other thing that I think is if you look at the peak and then you were saying it's a twelve to, if it's a twelve to sixteen year cycle. And you look at the peak and then you look out, say fifteen years or something, that's, that's really only maybe another eight years away from where we are, that it would go back up to.
Because even if it was slower, if the long, if the cycle is longer, it's still, yeah, if it's going to go that high, it will go up, sure. It will go. Is it that high or how long it's going to take, then what just.
Which as we get to the housing element plan, you'll, you'll, one of the things with housing elements is it's an eight-year cycle, which means that, just again, and thinking about facilities and real estate developments and whatever for things, the length of time that it takes to plan it, fund it, construct it and inhabit it can be a five to eight year, you know, I mean, that's a long time horizon. So just as I think, Ryan, you had mentioned of you need to be thinking about it before you need to be living in it, right? And that you can't react to the current situation and make decisions, oh, let's open a school, knowing that it's not, we might be at the top. You don't want to open up new things at the very top peak of your enrollment only to see it decline after, you know, you put money into, or, or vice versa.
Like, yeah, but here we are definitely at the bottom. Are we at the top bottom or are we at, you know?
We're thinking it's always going to go down, so, oh, we don't need that. And you do it right at the bottom and then whoop, it starts going back up and you're like, oh, darn it.
And the part specific, you know, to Marin County and to our two towns here that we have our students is there aren't any spaces anywhere to purchase where if we had to open a new school. So we're, you know, we're landlocked. We're, we're here with residential and, and so we need to be very careful about how we utilize our properties.
So when we're at the max in, when, in fourteen, fifteen, at that time, when we say we're like two hundred, two thousand three hundred and thirty-eight, that without any other classroom or could have been classroom in Red Hill, that we, we're not counting any, any of that.
Surface property.
We are not talking about surface property. We are really talking about the schools that we have, yeah.
And that's, so that, yeah, two thousand three hundred and twenty is our currently operated facilities that we operate as schools.
So we have been there. We have been there, not such a long time ago.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Yep, got it.
Okay, so moving into the housing element, so in case you don't know, I've had a lot of learning. I didn't even realize that communities have these. And the housing element provides an analysis of communities' housing needs for all income levels and also strategies that those municipalities use to provide those housing needs. And as Shelley mentioned, they're updated every eight years. And many of the elements or the housing elements has shifted a little bit in recent years is they're, they're coming with requirements. They're not just a recommendation that municipalities need to do, but it's tied to funding. So if you don't meet your housing element, there can be financial ramifications to those entities for, for not meeting them. And many of the, the areas of the housing element are to be accessible to low and moderate families as well as to accommodate workforce housing. And educator-specific housing is part of the workforce housing allocation conversation. And so there are, as Chris mentioned at the beginning of the presentation tonight on this topic, is our school district is within the boundaries in three different municipalities and serves the towns of Fairfax, San Anselmo, and then our Hidden Valley School is located within the bound, is town of San Anselmo, but county of Marin. And so as anybody knows who lives out in Sleepy Hollow, where you vote, it's not all the town and you don't vote for the town. And so those are elements. So each of these municipalities is, has housing elements. And in San Anselmo, they have not yet begun their housing element conversation for this re-up for the next eight years. The town of Fairfax has begun and the county of Marin has not yet begun the conversation either. And with the town of Fairfax, Shelley and I have attended a meeting of the Planning Commission of Fairfax and we have also been asked to participate in a meeting specifically because some of our district properties do end up on their opportunity site, on their list. And so they were just letting us know and also wanting to be sure that, that they would, as any of the properties that we have within the families of Fairfax are continuing on that list, at some point they would, we would need to have a conversation here at the board level. So to bring you all up to speed around that, so you may have questions for us as to, to the elements of that. The town of San Anselmo used to provide eight hundred and thirty-three new housing locations.
They're called, the towns, the towns are not developers. They don't own these properties. They are not builders. But what they have to do in their housing element is they have to provide the.
They have to identify.
They have to identify places where housing is a potential to be developed by the land owner.
That's where the opportunity is. That's what they call that.
And they have to create the opportunities, meaning they have to make it possible, however one wants to actually describe that, possible for that to happen. Those housing elements have to be certified by the state of California. So the state of California then has to go back and look at all of these municipalities to be able to say, have these municipalities actually put the regulations or the programs or the supports in place to make the housing possible that they have estimated? And it's about allocating the fair share of affordable housing or housing at different levels. So there's a little bit of this wrestling, you know, negotiating, shall we say, with municipalities in the state over what's been allocated to them and what's reasonable in the efforts that they're making to accommodate that, that housing. And so then property owners, like individual citizens and businesses and school districts get involved in that because then if towns are going to change zoning or change regulations or sweeten the deal by reducing fees or something like that, then property owners are impacted in that way.
Got it.
And you know so much because.
I was.
You and Ryan.
Ryan and I were on the planning commission, full disclosure. Were you on the planning? I was the co-chair of the planning commission at Fairfax at the last housing element process, so integrally involved. Were you on during the housing time?
I don't remember.
Nope. I think you came on after we had finished the housing.
Yeah, you came after the hard work. This is what you told me.
That's how I do it.
Exactly.
Are you crazy? Remember, I just told Julie. I didn't do any of the work.
So anyhow.
It's all her.
It's all my fault. So does that, does that mean, I'm asking simple question to understand the concept of opportunity. If, if one of your other property, it doesn't matter which, you know, municipality is, is getting on that list and it's a good opportunity by other people to asset, whoever they are, do we have to sell it to them or?
No, no. And if I can, no, and if I might. The, the process of which they identified these properties and identify what goes on the list is.
Or what's not on the list.
Or what's not on the list is the major problem. There's no established criteria. There are plenty of properties that, that would, would be equal to or greater than some of the properties that they did identify that they did not put on the list for reasons that they did not explain. And so therefore, the flawed process of having elected officials driven by staff who are trying to play politics with something that should have a very clear-cut criteria is at play. And so at the end of the day, when, when you want to come to someone who owns a property and say, hey, Mr. Johnson, we noticed you own a farm out here that's been in your family for, for three generations, we're just going to put it, we're identifying that as a place we can build houses on it, thanks. Now, he may not have any intent to sell any of it. Their job is not to care, their job is to put something on and identify it. The problem with what I saw in this particular one is if you ask what the criteria is and you ask why other very large contentious pieces of property were not put on this list or properties on, on this list were already removed from consideration based on a criteria that they didn't explain to you, then therein lies the flaw in the process. Because if you want to have these, these properties there, they should be equally identifiable by a set of criteria and not a group of people with an agenda. How about that?
That, I just got that. So that also tells me that it impact us because if we were going to go back to us, it's like, that impact us what you described because if we, if there was a property that's ours that's on that list and we're like, well, we didn't really, we're not planning to sell that property, it's like, whoa, we didn't ask for that. And on the other side, if we were thinking one of our property is a buildable, you know, it's a good candidate for doing something about it and it's not on that famous list, then we're kind of a little bit screwed. So we are side actors of a game that we are not really starting, right?
And so I think part of it is doing, is, is asking more questions and getting more information and making sure that we have all of the information across three different municipalities, right, who are in different phases and.
If all three have housing elements and we only know right now that the town of Fairfax has put our property on there, but we don't know about San Anselmo and county of Marin because they haven't begun the process yet. And so when we're looking at, you know, we're stewards and you are all stewards responsible for all of our district property, not just maybe to whom may come first. So the town of San Anselmo must, must come up with eight hundred and thirty-three, three new housing units, town of Fairfax, four hundred and ninety, and the county of Marin, three thousand five hundred and sixty-nine. So whatever the county of Marin expands, expands, that's not just, not meaning in the sleepy hollow.
It's only a period.
Their entire.
In your garden, Rachel.
And so the next slide is the Fairfax staff report dated January nineteenth, two thousand twenty-two. So there's a link there if you'd like to go and take a peek there. But the slide number one on the Fairfax Housing Element Plan is White Hill Middle School. So we can go back, it'll show specifically what they have listed, we can go back.
And just to clarify, number one doesn't mean it's like a, number one on the priority, they numbered them from north to south.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't mean they're first consideration. And so Chris, could you show us just up there, like what the, what specifically are they looking or are they interested in?
So again, if this is Sir Francis Street and this is Glen, they're looking at this portion up here at the very top section of the campus, which is.
The flat parking lot.
This part is flat and then you've got the hill going up.
Okay.
And that's the part as the, the last bond, that if we did have enough money left over in the bond, the talk was to put another multipurpose or gym.
Correct.
Up there. And that's the spot we talked about is currently used for overflow parking for our school events.
I'd like to say that personally, as a trustee of this district and a fiduciary to this district, I feel absolutely zero responsibility to be involved in a housing element for a town or a community with the assets that we have. This is how I personally feel. I did not sign up to be involved with housing. I signed up to be a fiduciary and responsible for assets and schools. And even though, and even though that they, the state is going to start to turn every stone that they can in order to push their own housing goals and they are going to the people who have those assets and who've owned them the longest, such as churches and schools. And those places had a lot of land a long time ago and they're trying to turn those over. And I'm just letting you know from my perspective, I do not believe a school trustee should spend, I should not spend my time worrying about the housing elements of other municipalities. It's not why I believe I am here. And so I believe that even though the state is mandating that we, we look at these things or these, these municipalities, look at these opportunities, I just want you to know personally, I feel zero obligation to assist any housing obligation with any other entity unless we as trustees and superintendent and community felt as though that was what we chose to do and we chose to approach them to maybe do it that way. I feel zero obligation to do anything in regard to their mandates. That's just me.
But there could be pressure, there could be in general pressure to, to, to sell something because in general, we need to, they, they are looking for space, right? So and then, okay, I hear you. That's my fault.
And I think the, my perspective. My perspective is to look at it and see from our perspective with our facilities and part of this is also to do an assessment of, see, are there, are there any areas of overlapping mutual benefit that is not just benefiting one municipality at the expense of another? Or one municipality at the expense of another? But are there, are there overlapping, are there pieces that is, are never going to be used as a school and could be a possibility? Or whatever, I don't know what they are, but this is the first, I mean, just understanding what we have. So it, the idea.
So what's a.
Are there areas of mutual beneficiality or not? Don't know.
And the reason that the second bullet on this slide, and doesn't have a number, is because the town of Fairfax eliminated Deer Park site from consideration due to its long and circuitous access and egress on their road. So these are direct quotes from that, that link there to that town of Fairfax meeting. And, and even if you notice going back up to the first bullet, the town of Fairfax utilized their map of all parcels accessible by only one means of vehicular ingress and egress to remove potential housing sites with White Hill being the only accession. So all of the property that they had identified of being in their housing element, they removed all of them except for White Hill. Of those that had only one means of ingress egress.
Okay, can someone tell me what ingress egress?
Way in and way out.
No multiple ways.
Sorry. So we're Glen Drive. You can't go through Glen Drive and get out somewhere else. You have to go down Glen Drive and back Glen Drive.
Oh, got it. Dead end.
So it's like Butterfield.
It's like, yes.
Yeah.
Got it.
Run road in, the same road gets you out.
Ah, so they say it's only means of.
Ingress egress.
Well, we use it in schools to talk about coming and goings on campuses, how students enter into the campus and how they leave. So not always a dead end. It's just a, with only one means of vehicular entry and exit.
So basically Fairfax took off every one of the properties that they did that had only one road in and out except this site.
I don't know how many they originally had on, you know, there could have been, I don't know.
Is there a reason for that exception or is just because it suited them?
That, that's the process that I'm telling you that is flawed is that there's no established criteria and it's random and as to who and how things were selected. Is that there's no established criteria and it's random and as to who and how things were selected, moved around and put forward.
Because that could be a criteria, but if there is an exception, that's not a criteria anymore. Okay, got it.
Yeah, I think the last meeting that shows up there is, actually during the meeting, they added a property that had been previously removed.
Okay.
And then, one of them, I think, was something called Jolly Hill, which I don't know where that is, but anyway, they, they removed it.
The January, if you wanna know more, you can watch, they, they do videos and you can watch. And the last one, the last town council meeting had a whole conversation on this. So, if you wanna get up to speed on what they're thinking was, they did a full presentation and then they had a full discussion. So, if you wanna see in action.
To Ryan, both yes and no. You know what I'm saying when you say like, I want to know more, a little bit yes, but I just, I'm hoping not to be spending, you know what I'm saying? So, I'm just kind of trying to, to understand, what do I need to understand versus what would be too much information and get me into another, you know, something else that I actually have not that much interest in, that's not good.
So, right now, the only municipality that is even asked to speak with us at all is Fairfax, town of Fairfax. Mary Jane Burke, superintendent of Marin County, has announced that they will be scheduling a countywide housing element. So, secret attendants, trustees, and various municipalities are gonna be invited to a meeting to talk countywide. And then also Senator Mike Fine, Mike Maguire, sorry, entity. Thick Matt, hello. Senator, you know, he's school services today.
No.
No, it's Thick Matt.
Fine is, is Thick Matt, okay.
Three years of D A.
All right, Senator Mike Maguire has scheduled just a hack hour Zoom call on Friday, February fourth with superintendents who, whose districts actually have surplus property. So, I'm going, I'm just gonna go just to hear more, I just wanna hear what he has to say. Their goal is specifically for educator workforce housing.
Oh, cool.
So, that, that is what the purpose of that conversation is. It's not general housing elements that are affordable, but specifically for educator workforce. So, I'll just go to learn more, hear what they have to say. We're learning about what all of the various entities and I think that kind of fit, Ryan, with what you said a little bit ago about we may have an interest. And if we don't know, and this is why we're talking about and looking at all of our properties, is knowing what all might be out there and available. But first and foremost, we exist to educate children.
Thank you.
And that is what we first and foremost, in my opinion, as your superintendent, need to keep at the forefront of everything we do, making sure that we have facilities to house our community's children.
Noted.
The way I'm seeing it, that's schools first, obviously, but we also need some offices for administrator. I could see how we could have a conversation about housing for staff. I think this is, this is, you know.
Affordable housing.
Correct, and I think that is the conversation I would love to have if we have some surplus that could fit that. The housing, the general housing is much further in the, you know, in the universe to me, much like, not something I'm going to sit in.
You know, as we talked about tonight, some of our eight properties that we own, some are in use for our schools, some have been declared surplus.
Yeah.
And, and so looking at the totality of all of the real property that the, that the district owns.
Understood.
All right, so we'll move on, I think, to the next slide, changes to sequoia, Chris.
So, this slide isn't here because as we look at our properties, one thing we always need to be aware of and cognizant of is any changes to the property could draw a SECO review, which is the California Environmental Quality Act. And things that might draw that SECO review are things such as if we were to raise a school and put teacher housing, for example, that would, that would draw a SECO review. If we were to do a change in the number of students that are educated at that site, so we were gonna increase twofold, for example, the number of kids that are on White Hill and we were gonna have to build new buildings, that would obviously draw a SECO review. If we were to do new construction, it could potentially draw a SECO review. And, and there's other things that could as well within things that we could do to the existing sites if we were to touch more than an acre of land, for example. So, there's, this list that I put on here is not all inclusive, but I just kind of wanted that out there so, so that the governing board understands that, that we would potentially have to go through that SECO process. And, trying to do it on my computer.
All right.
Thank you.
With that.
Well, I think since we did a lot of questions.
We have done so many questions. We had so many questions before being asked.
Any other, we can go ahead and move on to. Ryan, thank you again for taking the time for us to have the context so that, you know, we know what's what. As opportunities and challenges arise, we can have the context for making those appropriate decisions with full awareness. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right. All right, so now we are on to our consent actions. We've got three here on consent. Is there any, you know, questions?
I'll move consent.
We have a motion.
And a second.
We have a motion and a second on consent. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No opposed, okay. So, we have consent moved and then on to board business. Committee updates and reports from trustees. Yes.
Well, let us stop, please, Rachel.
There you go. So, I, there was a yes board meeting, but I wasn't here last meeting and I think Chelsea probably covered everything when she had her, yeah, that one.
It was great to see her.
Yes, yes.
Still not sure I've seen her in person. Oh, no, no, wait, you think I'm a monster? So, Safe Routs to School though, this last week. They are all fired up this year, they are on track to teach ten thousand kids. And so far, they've already taught five thousand. They are working on getting their education and encouragement projects going. So, because of like the Omicron situation, their, their events kind of pushed back a bit. Their first event in person is on the February second, the I Love to Walk in World Day. And then their second event is March fourteenth, which is like Pi Day because they're working. They're doing a spring challenge with the Jedi theme with coinciding with National Bike to School Day. They're doing their annual Bike Hero Contest where you write in about somebody who you have seen, who is particularly good about being aware or safe on the road, on their bike or walking or something like that. And so, it's kind of just a, a community's way to show support of kids who are doing a good job, being safe, courteous on bikes. So, it's, and actually I knew a kid who, who got out last year for riding to school with his little sister. So, I thought that was pretty cool. So, Safe Routs to School has a travel plan that they, they do, I think, every ten years or so. And what that is, is they develop travel plans for getting to and from school by, by gain greeways so that the kids can get there safely as they go. And so, like every ten years, they go and update the plans. Everything they had in their prior plan has been implemented. So, now they're looking at new goals, how to increase the number of students using active and green transportation, how to instill healthy habits, reducing the congestion on the way to school. So, they're working on that, that travel plan now and kind of pulling that together going forward. They gave us a bus update on the yellow bus, which serves White Hill, Tin Valley and Ross Valley Charter. And right now, the ridership's at five hundred and seventy-nine passes and their goal was six hundred and fifty for this year. So, they're, they're a bit short from where they've been in prior years. And part of that's just because of the diminished capacity and they think that there's some discomfort level with some people wanting kids on a bus. And so, they're gonna send out a survey to kind of figure out how ridership's been impacted and why. And it might be something totally different, I don't know. I mean, in our case, my kid just takes a bike now. So, I mean, it's just, it just depends. There was, I guess, an issue about some public bus transportation issues at White Hill just because the kids weren't taking the yellow bus, they were taking public transportation and kind of just overwhelming the bus. It was just the sheer volume of kids was kind of like a little bit overwhelming because they were waiting in line and they were like out in the middle of the streets, there were so many kids. So, they're, they're doing what they came to manage the crowd, control and master the ratio.
Rachel, what was that? When they had the overcrowding on the public bus?
It's been this year.
The whole year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's right after school, yeah.
Yeah, I wonder if that has anything to do with how much it costs to get a bus pass?
And they're.
Well, yeah, duh.
So, who was at the meeting on the Safe Routs meeting on the issue of the cost of the bus pass?
I have a boost, everybody was there.
Okay, good, thank you.
And it has to do with the diminished capacity. So, there are students who would love to have a bus pass. That might have been a communication with parents as an example. And we've had conversations with the yellow bus company around that. But given COVID and the agreements they have with the drivers, they do have diminished capacity. So, a lot of the children who even have a bus pass, they don't wanna wait for the later bus, but they do have a bus pass for, and they'll go out to Sir Francis Drake to try to get one that counts a little sooner.
Yep.
So, there's a mad rush out there. So, between the Golden Gate Supervisor, because of course, the bus on the Lema is Golden Gate Transit. So, between the supervisor, Madame Maria, who will go out and check. So, every time there was a supervisor out there, the kids are just lining up perfectly and great. And so, Matt's communicated with the families of the riders to help them understand and talking with the students directly for the danger of, for their safety out there. So, it has come up absolutely in J P. And it's been a topic of conversation is ridership and also the cost of the passes. So, what you were saying about buses is definitely a factor, certainly, yeah. Because it is less expensive to get the route. But when you ride the Golden Gate Transit, you're on with the general population.
Oh, that's fine, as long as it's cheaper. I don't, I don't blame them.
No.
It's something that we've been discussing at J P for years, it seems like. But anyway, go ahead.
So, last spring and again this fall, they did White Hill Middle School, they did car, bike, pedestrian counts. So, they counted the number of people coming in and out just to see like how people were getting to the school since obviously that's the one where there's a lot of traffic and it impacts the rest of Fairfax. And they said that last spring, that fifty percent were walking or biking home after school. I mean, this is when, you know, we were still in hybrid mode and so things were a little bit different than they are now. But they said that there were a lot more walkers in the afternoon when there was no bus service. And since there's a lot more car traffic in the mornings, so I think people are dropping their kids off and they were making them walk home or picking them up somewhere else. And then this fall, there were more walkers and bikers in the evenings, they get out at afternoons again. And more cars in the morning, but there was a decrease from when there was no yellow bus. So, there has been positive response to how the yellow bus, as far as traffic goes there and from cars. And they also mentioned that while they were doing all these pedestrian bike counts, they said that the biker behavior has improved a lot. Like they made a big point of saying that helmets were all on and buckle properly. They weren't riding up and down the Glen Drive, they were using the routes that they were told to use going through the field. So, it's a lot safer for their kids. But they said just overall that they were going where they're supposed to and it was like a really positive shift in their behavior on their bikes and so they were like really proud of that.
I'm gonna interrupt and tell you that that ends at when they get on the Lima drive. And it is a very bad situation over there and it has none of our to do with. I talked to Matt about it already, but it is an accident waiting to happen on the Lima after they got off campus. And right by that bus, kids, I mean, I pick my kid up there every day, I see what's going on. There's going to be an accident, there is going to be an injury and cars and kids are not doing well. And I've even called the police department to tell them that they need to get out there because I drive it and I see crazy behavior. And so, just putting it out there to keep it real and on the record, it is not all great in La La Land because that one street on the Lima is a hundred kids on bikes and people trying to drive cars and kids riding in three wide and not moving over and it's, it's a real problem. And I, but I know it's not our, there's nothing we can do about it. It's not, it's not during school hours, it's not on school property, so it really doesn't have any bearing on us. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't, I wouldn't allow people to sit here and tell me that everything's great in Bike Land because it's really not.
I can pass that on to Ryan, thank you. San Salmo gave an update, they are close to completing the gap that went from Sir Francis Drake onto Butterfield. There were sidewalks that they were completing throughout there and I, and it's, there's still a couple like com things up, but it's getting closer to done. They're planning to do work over by Wade Thomas from Ross to Butterfield to Brookside, I guess. They're coming out of bid on that work shortly. They're getting funding to put a Red Hawk sign, it's Saunders and Sir Francis Drake over by the high school. So, it's kind of instead where the flashing light is, it'll be like when we're, it's over by College of Marin where you like push it and it turns the light red. So, it'll make people stop instead of having like the caution lights. And so, that is, they're trying to get funding for that right now. And then they're, they're just doing some more ceiling striping along Butterfield now that they've done all that sewer work. So, that's a lot safer. I've noticed that the bike lanes there are a lot wider and more wide. Fairfax, they, they said thank you for, to the Manor and White Hill families because they've only received one complaint about the, the Sir Francis Drake sinkhole issue, which if you've got kids and you've been driving out that way or you just had to go there for any reason, it's, it was just kind of a slog to get through there, but what are you gonna do with this giant hole in the ground? But they were grateful that people were like understanding about that. They're doing a bunch of crosswalk refreshes with that thermoplastic look reflective beads to make it more visible when people are crossing. And they've got some pavement design projects that are going on, that they're trying to just improve sidewalks and accessibility. And then Butterfield, they said that they've had good outcomes with their Eyes Up campaign at crosswalks on Butterfield. And now their focus is on making safer crossings at the community center that they have and making an actual biking on Butterfield. And they've got a community survey out right now, it's not just for sleepy hollow people, but it's just to kind of talk to anybody who travels down, sort of in any way, shape or form, just kind of get their feedback. And so, that's available and it's been going out, various channels.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jan, pass me.
Yeah, well, I like, I had a very, very short update. I just wanted to remind everybody that at our next meeting, the next morning, so we have next meeting on February eighth and on February nine in the morning, which will be today to give you an update at that time, there will be the J-LAC kind of annual update that's kind of this long session from eight to ten thirty, if any of you is interested. You would need to plan that a little bit because it's a two and a half hour session that well I'm telling you today. So, if you were interested in joining that, if you're not, I will give you the update, obviously, but just, you are all invited for this special event. You should have received that email from Marcy and even maybe from Ken Lippi as well. I will be there and I will report back, but you are invited. That was my update.
Good. If anybody is interested in the legislative stuff, I also find that the California School Boards Association, daily and weekly.
Yes.
Roundup or something like that is a really good.
It's a good study source too.
Any other? I don't have any committees. Nope. So, that would bring us then to, oh, approval is gonna jump to the superintendent, but we have approval of the minutes for the January eleventh meeting.
Yeah.
Are there any edits or changes that anybody have in looking over those?
No, I looked at them and I'm, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the January eleventh meeting.
Great.
Second.
Motion and a second? Right, so the table over here? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I'm gonna have a stand and feel like, thank you.
Yeah, Rachel was not there.
Rachel was not here, thank you, Rachel.
Yeah.
All right. So, we have a motion second and all in favor, aye, with one abstention. Any opposed? No? Great. So, approval of those minutes. Now, we're on to the superintendent cabinet report.
All right, and so.
We've got a back to back meeting, so.
Yeah. Chris, anything more from student services?
No, I have nothing, nothing more this evening, thank you.
Thank you. Eric, anything from student services?
Sure, yeah, let's see, just a couple of different categories, like kind of more on the wellness realm. Next week, Wednesday's Global School Play Day on February second. So, we'll have our different schools and different classrooms that will be participating in that. So, that's exciting. We talked about the mid-year climate and wellness surveys going out to all third through eighth graders. Just kind of on a little bit of a different sort of level, we have lots of cool stuff at the middle school. There are basketball teams for sixth, seventh and eighth grade, girls and boys. So, there are seasons underway, which is really exciting. And having been in the middle school setting for many years. Um, and having been in, uh, the middle school setting for many years, it, it can sometimes be tough to get all, all those things together. The coaches, the everything, the, you know, the pandemic, um, are all challenges. It's really cool to see that. You know, because as we know, sometimes kids get to high school, there's, you know, um, it's maybe a bit more competitive. Teams have cuts. It's neat to see kids have the opportunity to get that experience, um, in, in middle school. Um, and, and sometimes that's where they figure out they really like something and stick with it. Uh, then, uh, clubs, they've got all kinds of clubs going on, Debate Spirit, Disney Pride, Marvel, Questing Children for Change, Coding Culture Equity Task Force, Mountain Bike as After School Club, knitting, one or four games, all kinds of cool ways to get kids connected. Um, and actually, uh, uh, MCOE has a new kind of wellness team. Um, and they're already starting to reach out to us districts and schools about, um, looking at some more, uh, broadly applied practices, wellness screeners, things like that. That's been really exciting. Um, next week, the UCSF Dyslexia Center is coming back for round two of, um, testing out their beta screener um, for K1 students, and the Brookside Campus has been so generous to host them. And then they come back for a third time in April. And what we anticipated is once they, you know, uh, solidify the screener as being, um, valid, then we get to get our hands on it for, for next year, along with them as professional partners and, um, our teachers' ongoing learning and really looking at, uh, classroom practices that benefit all kids, along with intervention strategies to help students that are struggling with, uh, aspects of reading. Couple of things in special ed, um, it's been really cool with the Selpa. Um, uh, they've, uh, helped to organize a couple of different parent education events, which we've, uh, broadcast and publicized and had Ross Valley Parent Representation, uh, at, at these different meetings. There is a two-part training on collaborative IEP meetings, um, which is tremendous. Um, and anybody that's been a part of an IEP meeting knows that, that it's very complex. Uh, there's just all kinds of information, and so, um, and it's also a very dynamic process. It involves lots of different people. Um, so that's really cool. And then there is a four-part legal series, um, hosted by school and college legal services that's put on by Selpa and the Special Education Advisory Committee, which is the parent committee, CIA, um, which, uh, we've also put out there. Um, and, uh, and we also just, um, on a general note, just want to thank the many agencies that we work with. They're, they really are, um, not anybody we typically talk about. We talk about our teachers, our staff, um, our kids, our community. But we've worked with so many different agencies to bring about, uh, necessary services to our students, whether they're in our district program, in MCOE programs, in non-public school programs. We know that staffing has been one of the top three major obstacles we've all had to face. And these agencies that we've worked with have helped us staff critical positions, from teaching positions to one-to-one paraprofessional positions. Last year, they helped us staff a nurse. And, um, I, I mean, we had one agency that helped us get a kindergartner, um, to school with a one-on-one aid that otherwise wouldn't have been able to go to school without this support. So, um, anyway, uh, the partnership with, uh, with them has, uh, again, kind of been maybe an unsung, um, element to the work that we're doing. Um, but it's, it's helped make sure that, uh, we're ensuring access, um, and critical services for our students. All right, and student services, rest its case. Thank you.
Thank you.
Julia, anything from, more from curriculum instruction?
Um, only, I think, to say that it's been nice. This week I haven't gotten any calls from principals saying, please come fill in, which I take is a good sign.
Wow.
So I, I think, you know, the world is telling us, the county is telling us, things are getting better. And from my perspective, it seems like we're getting there. And, and just for our staff at every site, our classified staff, our, our sophisticated staff, it's been, you know, a trying month and, and we're getting there. So onwards.
Thank you.
All right, and just along those lines, um, with the Marin School Guidelines, they're, they changed. So today, uh, we had a meeting with, um, Dr. Willis, and, uh, he went through the, the three changes. So, um, what, uh, where they're shifting their focus now in the Marin School Guideline of the 32-point Plan is really moving more in alignment with the CDPH. As we're seeing that the Omicron variant is extremely widespread. So because it is so widespread in the community, that it is, um, something that's very hard to track as to where a person might be, might contract it. And so moving to in alignment with CDPH guidelines, they've updated large gatherings. So for a while there, and what Dr. Willis explained is, um, coming back from winter break, really wanted to tighten up. So some of the guidelines that became much more restrictive in terms of gatherings and sports activities and things like that, excuse me, was, um, with the goal of keeping our schools open, keeping students and staff in our schools. And so now that we're seeing that the surge, um, has been on the decline since January 9th in Marin, that, um, feeling that we have enough data now, that they were able to update. So with large gatherings, they're now in alignment with CDPH, and they're called mega events. And the number with that would be anything that is 500 or more, um, people in attendance. So that ranges from, in staff, students, uh,
We don't have any.
spectators, whatever it might be. It's the totality of every person, um, at that event. And then in, um, guideline number 24, which is around masking, is when we came back from winter break, the guideline changed to, um, having, um, employees wear a more, um, higher protective, the most protective type of face covering. So that was, um, either recommending, um, a KN95 and N95 variation of those. Um, or if a employee were to wear a surgical mask, they could wear a cloth mask over it.
Yep.
But it was not recommended that, um, employees wear cloth masks, um, to work unless there was double masking going on. And so that, um, guideline has switched to now include students, volunteers, visitors, um, student staff and volunteers, so anybody who might come onto your campus. And so, um, we know that in our schools, we have a lot of, um, surgical masks, student-sized, children-sized surgical masks. Um, but Chris did go looking, and it's, and in other districts we're talking about, very difficult to find, um, KN95s. So, um, we'll, um, be continuing to look. Luckily, the county in Marin did provide KN95s for, um, staff. We just picked those up last week, I think, or. Um, and so, uh, we have a nice supply of those for all of our employees. Um, and hopefully, as the supply gets more available for students, then we will, maybe they'll be able to purchase them and provide them to us for students as well. Um, but we'll keep looking. So in the interim, once we can, um, have a meeting and talk as a staff in terms of how to do this, we then will be willing it out to have, um, we have a lot of student surgical masks. So to suggest that they wear their cloth masks over, um, their surgical masks as added protection. Um, and then another element of the guideline was, um, really encouraging masking outdoors when physical distancing is not feasible. And they're no longer defining physical distancing as six feet. They're talking about folks just, whether at any of our ages and any of the settings that we're in, is monitoring our distance from a person. So when feasible, be farther apart. When it's not feasible, then you might be closer together. But take advantage because the way that the pandemic is moving, and they're starting to see, go, is that likely will end up as an endemic soon, which is like any other communicable disease virus in which there are deaths from those viruses. And they use specifically flu and, I don't remember the other one off the top of my head. It was specifically flu and, and one other. Um, and so various levels, so we all need to be mindful and careful. And then the third and final guideline, uh, that's switched is, um, number 31, which has to do with sports activities, performances, things like that, um, that, again, they just reference mega events. So going to the CDPH guidelines, um, around the mega events. And, um, recommendations around, um, depending on the size of it is, um, vaccination requirements because those mega events do require vaccinations. And so for any school setting, most likely in our community or in our county, it's going to be the high schools that are going to have those very large, which they do have to have the ability to, um, determine vaccination status. And if a person is not vaccinated, to be able to, um, provide them testing. And so they gave timelines, if it's a PCR or if it's a rapid antigen. Um, so those are the updates there, um, for COVID. And then, um, we kind of, I think in the budget, propose, or the governor's, um, budget that Chris talked about earlier, is there are a lot of new programs that we're having to, um, learn about and develop plans for. And so here we are, you know, at the end of January, as we start to look for our normal typical moving into the new school year, we also are having to learn about new plans that are coming forward, requirements, um, and, um, such as, um, Universal TK. Even though we operate TK currently in the district and will be expanding by two months next year, there must be a TK plan that you all approve.
Yep.
And so with, um, input, and so we'll be working on those. We have our, our regular next board meeting, we'll be coming in with the, um, LCAP update, um, and of our February 8th board meeting. So those are things that are already in place, that we must provide updates, we have to write plans, and, um, the other ones are, are coming along too. So, um, there'll just be more, um, probably, uh, times at our board meetings where we'll be doing presentations as well as, um, having input from us and getting input from our community.
So I can put that?
Preview.
Preview, that's how much segue is, very nicely into, uh, the last thing on our, our agenda, which is future board topics and board direction. So that's a good, um, preview into that. We heard a little bit about the preview of second interim budget. As always, if any of the other trustees have topics that you want to make sure are showing up on future agenda items, yeah, I'm hoping Marcy, we do agenda planning the week before, so, um, please, everyone is welcome to add those topics in there if there's something that you want to make sure gets on the agenda. Anything else in terms of the meeting review, board topics, debrief? Anything else? All right.
Good for now.
Then, uh, it is 9:50, and, um, I will go ahead and, but you're not meeting at 9:50.